I know, I'm like five, four. Three, two, one. Alrighty, good evening. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you, and welcome to our May School Committee meeting. It's great to see this room full of a large audience, so thank you for joining us tonight. For starters, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on April 13th?
Second the motion.
Awesome. Next up, we have public comments section. If there's anyone in the audience, please join us in the front. Awesome. Good evening. Please state your name, your address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Kevin Small Jr., my address is 80 Pearl Street, and I'm excited to be here to see the Chelsea School Committee in action. As someone that's passing around my children's book that I wrote two years ago during the pandemic, and it is a book that is best suited for four- to six-year-old readers within the city. I am a proud graduate of Excel Academy Charter Schools, where I met the chairwoman of the school committee here, Kelly Garcia. And I wrote this book to share my passion for hospitality and travel, and to excite young people about those two industries. So at this time, I'll just read the back of the book, which is not too long, and hopefully you all can follow along with me. "Jack stays in a hotel is a short colorful story that focuses on a young boy named Jack, who after being called downstairs for breakfast, learns that his family is going on a trip that requires his first stay in a hotel. After packing his bags and navigating the airport with his parents, Jack begins to experience some of the aspects of a hotel accommodation that we all love. From tasty snacks in a warm pool with other kids his age, to the basketball game on high-definition television, and top-notch cleaning services, Jack is equally overjoyed as he is surprised every step of the way throughout checkout. With easy-to-understand language coupled with excellent illustrations, readers get the opportunity to partake in the hotel perspective from a child's point of view and grasp what makes the hotel stay so special for them." So I hope you all can read the book at your earliest convenience, and I really enjoyed writing it, so thank you so much for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, any other comments? Don't be shy. Alrighty, team, that closes up our public comments section. Next up, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Beta, to present our awards for tonight.
Great. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and to share our first time of what we have call, are calling the Excellence Award. And what we really want to do is highlight excellence in Chelsea Public Schools, in particular, our graduates from Chelsea High School, our own Chelsea High School residents, and people who are making a difference in their sphere of influence. So the CPS Excellence Award is a new endeavor established by our school district to recognize individuals in our community who went to school in Chelsea, are outstanding representatives of Chelsea Public Schools, and who serve the community in a manner that our students can admire and aspire to. This year's award recipients include public servants, community organizers, inspiring teachers, and impactful professionals who collectively represent Chelsea and its youth in a manner worth celebrating. So I get, I will introduce the first three. And our first awardee is Leo Robinson. Leo Robinson's entire life has been dedicated to public service and the Chelsea community. A lifelong resident, Chelsea resident and graduate of the Chelsea School System, Leo was the captain of his junior high basketball team and co-captain of the Chelsea High School basketball team. He attributes these experiences as impactful for him, teaching him leadership skills and lessons on how to interact with people. He used these social skills to transition into the public sector where he is the longest-serving city counselor in Chelsea, and currently is counselor-at-large. Leo's work as a city official makes an impact on students every day. He is a regular supporter of CPS events, you'll see him at a lot of basketball games, and we are pleased to present him with a CPS Excellence Award. And so, what we'll do is... And we're gonna break for photos. But thank you. Congratulations, Leo. Oh yeah, okay. Our next awardee is Joan Cromwell. As a Chelsea student, resident, president of the Chelsea Black Community, and active community member, Joan Cromwell's leadership is impactful throughout our city and within our schools. Joan's work helped operationalize the free vaccination clinics offered at Chelsea Senior Center, benefiting families and residents throughout the city. Examples such as the Chelsea Trailblazer Awards, annual Black History Month events, and Black Lives Matter protests are just a few references to how Joan and the Chelsea Black Community provide services that benefit Chelsea families and help educate the community. Joan is an advocate for our students, our families, and community, and we are pleased to present her with this CPS Excellence Award. Our next awardee is Gladys Vega. And you know what? I think I'm gonna have Ms. Chera Garcia read this one, since this is her niece, her auntie.
Titi, I love you, so I'm gonna try not to get emotional. Gladys Vega is an incredible representative of Chelsea Public Schools. She has lived in Chelsea since the age of nine, graduated from the Chelsea School System, and has worked constantly to advocate and support Chelsea residents. As executive director of La Colaborativa, she has been at the forefront of programs, initiatives, and community organizing campaigns. La Colaborativa's youth programming, including the Summer Youth Employment Program, Riot Squad, and more, provide tremendous opportunities for our students. Gladys's advocacy for the Chelsea community around the areas of public health, housing access, and more, continue to set a tremendous example for our students. Congratulations, Titi, on your CPS Excellence Award.
And so I'm gonna call up Christine Lee, our HR director, who I just wanted, who helped us with all of this, put this together. And so I'm gonna have her introduce the next two.
With the help of Michael Sullivan.
Michael Sullivan as well, yes.
Alright, so it is my pleasure to introduce Anna Romero as our next CPS Excellence Award recipient. Anna is a shining example of the teachers that we have across our district. Her family is embedded in the Chelsea community, and her siblings, cousins, nieces, and nephews are all either graduated from CHS or making their way through the school system. Anna shared with us a memory during her senior year at CHS that helped shape her life and why her family is so passionate about Chelsea, the Chelsea community. She recalls the last day of her 12th grade English class. Her teacher, Ms. Dina Nisco, announced that every year she gave a copy of "Oh, The Places You'll Go", by Dr. Seuss, to a senior student who had demonstrated academic excellence and enthusiasm in the class during the whole school year. She recalls Ms. Dina Nisco awarding Anna and told her that she is someone whose work ethic was consistent the whole year. She learned an important lesson at that moment, which is to do her absolute best until the very end, because it will all make a difference in unexpected ways. Because of Ms. Dina Nisco and other influences, Anna chose to become a teacher. And thanks to the marvelous Ms. Marusha Alvarez, who was her mentor teacher, Anna returned to Chelsea High School and made it her home. Anna, you go above and beyond every single day to support Chelsea High School students, and thank you for all you do, and congratulations on your CPS Excellence Award. Next, we have Cesar Castro. Cesar Castro is a Chelsea High School graduate, and a memorable one at that. If you look around at the banners that adorn the gymnasium walls, you'll see Cesar's name etched as a CHS basketball player who scored 1,000 career points during his time on the team. Sport and the game of basketball has been central to Cesar's life as a Chelsea resident, leading to the development of the annual Let It Fly Basketball Tournament. Approaching its seventh edition this summer, Cesar was part of the founding group for a tournament that raised thousands of dollars for the community, giving scholarships to students, and became a staple of summer activities in Chelsea. Cesar is also an educator as well, working in CPS as an elementary school professional. We applaud Cesar for his passion for service and daily work he does with our students, and congratulations on your CPS Excellence Award.
Congratulations to all of the recipients. We will now take a five-minute break to take pictures, and we invite all of the honorees to the podium. And also the school committee members, please join. Alrighty, team, we are coming back from a small break. Thank you, Veronica. Alrighty, team, so now I will turn it over, back over to our superintendent, Dr. Beta, to go over our student achievements.
Great. So Mr. Lovato is out today, so Mr. Delaney will do Mr. Lovato's report. We're very interchangeable in our cabinet. We are multi-talented, so Mr. Delaney, you get to do something other than the COVID report. He was mourning that today.
Not sure this is on. Can you hear me? Alright, so it's really a quick one. So we have our daily attendance to change. If you see, in most of the younger grades, there's a little bit of a downtick, but in the upper grades, there's a slight uptick, but not much, not many changes from March to April. Overall, we're at 88% for the district for April. In March, it was 89.5, so there's a bit of a drop. Typically around vacations, we do have families who tend to travel back to the home country and sometimes come back a little bit late, and I think that has something to do with the downtick. And that's pretty much it for the attendance. On a more positive note, we, we know through previous meetings, we're not where we want to be in terms of the dropout rate. However, if you look at the bottom bullet down there, for the month of April, we are proud to say that we have had zero students withdraw. So we had an excellent month in terms of the dropouts, and that's, that's it for the updates.
Thank you. So we do not have a COVID update, and so our student representative...
Valerie Creighton, and I am one of the student representatives. I believe that this...
Sorry, Valerie, do you mind talking into the mic?
Is this any better?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hello, everyone. My name is Valerie Creighton, and I am one of the student representatives. I believe that this may be my last meeting with you all, as I may not be able to make it to the last meeting in June. In case I can't, I just wanted to say that I am so thankful that I had this opportunity to represent my school here at the school committee meetings and advocate for student concerns. I am thankful for all the skills that I have gained and the people I have met through this opportunity. I came in as someone who felt very shy, but I knew that I wanted to use my voice to help make a difference, and I plan to continue doing so after high school at Boston University. That being said, thank you. Thank you. That being said, I don't have many updates this time. AP students are diligently working hard to study for and take their AP exams. Some of the tests this week, this week have been AP Chemistry, Statistics, Literature, and US History. Next week will include AP Spanish and Calculus and much more. The talk about lifting the mask mandate has been going around the school. Some teachers have given students the opportunity to share their opinions on the situation. For the most part, students have shared that they don't have strong opinions about the rule. Some are happy, some say that masks being lifted doesn't bother them, and some are still deciding on whether they want to keep their mask on or off. I am very happy that there are these safe spaces to have these respectful and mindful conversations, as they will hopefully make the transition much more comfortable for the students. Those are all the updates that I have tonight. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Lots of celebration out in the hallway. So a friendly reminder to our team up here, please speak into the mic so that we are able to hear everyone, and those watching at home can also hear our meeting. And Veronica will be reading the statement from Cecilia, our other student representative, so thank you, Veronica.
Sure. So Cecilia says, "Hello, everyone. I hope everyone had a good day. In case you forgot about me, my name is Cecilia, and I'm one of the student representatives. I have not been able to be in the monthly meetings, and I apologize for my absences. And this is the reason why I'm writing this. Throughout the past months, a lot of things have changed in the school that a lot of students don't consider them as good. A lot of students were not informed about the rules being set again, and they were confused about how everything worked. I believe that the school should have better communication informing students and parents with things that are changing and happening at the school." I, she has a quote in here. "I know that all of these rules have always been rules, and they're not new, but we don't get why they had to start in the quarter when school is about to end. And a lot of people are not aware of this change regarding attendance," says a CHS junior. "Other than this, a lot of things have been well-managed in the school that a lot of students are happy with. For example, most of the time, the hallways and bathrooms are being controlled to avoid students from skipping, which gives students an easier way to use bathrooms and be in class. A lot of students are happy that the mask use in the schools is becoming optional on May 9th, since it's the only place where the masks still have to be used. I also want to congratulate all the seniors that have committed to their college/universities. I also would like to say that I am committed to Eastern Connecticut State University." This will be all of my updates for tonight. Thank you and have a good night.
Cecilia, if you're watching from home, congratulations on behalf of the school committee.
Great, and I'll do the personnel updates. You can see we had hired 42% Caucasian, 58% Hispanic, 0% Black, 0% Asian Pacific Islander. We've had some resignations, as you can see in the report, and some no promotions and transfers, and, and leaves of the absences, there were zero. Our enrollment numbers continue to remain steady. We've gained a few, couple few students from the last report. So our total enrollment is right now at 6,188 students, which actually takes us back to pre-pandemic levels. So we have, we have, we are now at the point at pre-pandemic levels. When we left in 2020, we were at 6,200, so we are on the cusp of being right at pre-pandemic levels, which is good news. And I'd like to commend these two reports for the record.
Thank you, Dr. Beta.
Okay, and then, yeah. And then we just have two committee reports, Budget and Finance and Human Resources, Enclosures D and E.
Do I have a motion to commend these two reports to... Thank you. Second, thank you, Mr. Oregan. Alrighty, team, next up, we have new business. First thing on our new business is consideration and action to accept an increase of $15,256 from DESI for multiple federal grants for the 2021-2022 school year. Explanation: DESI has adjusted Chelsea's allocations for fiscal year 2022 for multiple federal grants. The additional funds will be used to continue the identified priorities within each grant. Massachusetts General Law Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept an increase of $15,256 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for multiple federal grants for the 2021-2022 school year. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept a private grant in the amount of $15,000 from the Chelsea Education Foundation for the intergenerational literacy program funded by the Anna B. Sterns Charitable Foundation. Explanation: Funds have been awarded by the Anna B. Sterns Charitable Foundation to support the intergenerational literacy program. The Anna B. Sterns Charitable Foundation funds projects designed to strength, strength, oh, sorry, to strengthen the education, independence, and/or socioeconomic status of women, children, and youth. The funds will be used for stipends, student assistance, supplies, and other expenses in the support of the program. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept a private grant in the amount of $15,000 from the Chelsea Education Foundation for the intergenerational literacy program funded by the Anna B. Sterns Charitable Foundation. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2021-2022 for specified salaried positions. Explanation: District staff are proposing to add the title of Director of School Data and delete the existing registrar position. The registrar position has historically been responsible for creating the course catalog for Chelsea High School and enrolling students in their requested classes as spaces has been available. The new position will have significantly expanded duties, which warrant a change in the pay classification. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2021-2022 for specified salaried positions. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative. Seven in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to one million fifteen thousand dollars to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, instruction and assessment, and Clark Avenue Middle School to special education and pupil personnel and/or facilities and transportation. Explanation. Savings are available in the benefits and payroll adjustments due to reduced spending for active employee health insurance, and some expenses anticipated in instruction and assessment have been covered by available grants. Savings in Clark Avenue Middle School have been generated by vacancies this year. The funds are being transferred to special education and student services for out-of-school, out-of-district tuition and/or to facilities and transportation for additional one-time projects, such as the purchase of additional student and teacher furniture, equipment, etc. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to one million fifteen thousand to move funds from benefits and payroll adjustments, instruction and assessment, and Clark Avenue Middle School to special education and pupils' personnel and/or facilities and transportation. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to authorize the prepayment of up to one point five million dollars in special education out-of-district tuition fees to the SEAM Collaborative and/or SHURE Collaborative for fiscal year 2023. Explanation. Massachusetts state law allows school districts to prepay special education tuition using current-year dollars to pay for future-year tuition costs. In fiscal year 2020, the school committee authorized a prepayment of one million dollars in tuition using savings that were generated that year during the initial months of the COVID-19 pandemic. In fiscal year 2021, this was expanded to nearly one point two million dollars. At present, up to one point five million dollars may be available for prepayment from the fiscal year 2022 budget. This prepayment will help cover tuition costs next year. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to authorize a prepayment of up to one point five million in special education out-of-district tuition fees to the SEAM Collaborative and/or SHURE Collaborative for fiscal year 2023. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Zabat?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, the motion carries. Alrighty, team, that is all we have for New Business. Now, I will open it up to our team to share any announcements. Ms. Cabral?
I'd like to give a shout-out to all my fellow educators in Chelsea Public Schools, and thank you for all the amazing work that you've been doing. And if you haven't already been, if someone hasn't already said this, we so amazingly appreciate you this week and all the folks that have been helping out students throughout this time.
Ms. Cabral, thank you for reminding us that it's Teacher Appreciation, sorry. Teacher Appreciation Week, and so I echo her sentiment in thanking and expressing gratitude to all of our teachers in the community of Chelsea and beyond. Any other, Ms. Alfaro?
I just want to congratulate all the awardees, but also I would like to say congratulations to all at the state level, and really important bill just passed, which is the, I'm like so emotional because it's like driver's license that has been fought for twenty years, and finally, it has passed above levels, the House and the state. So now, we are hoping and urging everybody to support that the state governor also passes this. This would allow a lot of parents who have no driver's license to be able to get a driver's license and drive their kids to school, commute safely to work. So I'm so happy and thrilled to say congratulations to all of those on the fight too.
Thank you, Ms. Alfaro.
I do have a couple announcements. One is, again, we'd like to thank all of our educators, and as this is Educator Appreciation Week, and we are so grateful for our Chelsea Public School teachers and how they work with our students every day. And we have, we have so many dedicated teachers, and especially during this time, we are so grateful for everybody that works with our students. And we just want to say a special thank you to our teachers today, this week, but they're appreciated every, every day. So, and then, another thing that we're real excited about is our Youth Mental Health Day that we're having tomorrow at the Williams Complex from three to five. So we're really trying to bring an awareness to mental health and, and really have conversations. And so tomorrow, we're, we kicked off Chelsea, the Chelsea Cares Campaign with the city and with our community partners. And tomorrow, we're, we have Youth Mental Health Day from three to five. So we encourage our families to come, and we're real excited about that.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Alrighty, team. I will end our meeting with wishing all of our senior students and juniors who are taking AP exams this month and students taking MCAS. We are almost done with school, so hang in there, everyone. We are almost done. Alrighty, team. And with that, I am adjourning this meeting at seven forty-one. Oh, wait a minute, I need a motion, it's been a while. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at seven forty-two?
Motion to adjourn meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.